Pursuant to Section 841411 under Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 001 and the Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, August 20th, 2018 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Vice President America will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
Right. First is our vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Allman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
I'm present.
Thank you. Moving on, the school spotlight, Mrs. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Board President Snow, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Cheryl Logan. We are pleased to present Burke High School students and brothers, James and Jackison Burks, as tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight. The Burks brothers competed in and won their respective classes in the Ohio United World Wrestling Cadet Team Trials in June, qualifying them for the World Team to represent the United States at Wrestling Championships in Croatia in July. This is an awesome feat for two brothers to make the World Team. Additionally, James, a senior, was also a finalist for the Omaha Sports Insider Male Athlete of the Year and a finalist for Lincoln Journal Star Boys Multi-Sport Athlete of the Year. In July, the Burks brothers participated in the Marines Cadet Junior High School National Championships in Fargo, North Dakota. James became an All-American by placing third in Junior Greco-Roman Division. Jackison made history by becoming the first Nebraskan since 2010 to win the Cadet Freestyle National Championship. We salute James and Jackison for their accomplishments, and this evening, I would like to welcome Burke Principal Gaylan into the podium for remarks, and their mother is also here with them this evening.
Well, thank you and good evening. It's a true honor to be standing up here with these two gentlemen, Jay Kason and James. I wish I had time to tell you all kinds of stories. I know James' first state championship, he had to wrestle his stepbrother in the final to win, so that was a story in and of itself. But watching these two gentlemen in the hallways at Burke High School, I see them at lunch in the hallways a lot, right? Let's get to class kind of stuff, right? But just the athleticism, and I don't know if you've ever watched a wrestling match, but it's got to be one of the most grueling sports. You might think only three minutes at a time, but it's full force, and so if you get a chance to come watch these guys, please do. And I know James also is a running back at Burke High School, and you will see his wrestling talents on the field. I mean, he is hard to bring down because he's still hopping on one foot and bouncing on one arm, and but I don't want to give any either one more spotlight than the other because they both are just outstanding student athletes at Burke High School and so proud to be here with them this evening. Their coach, Coach Ryan, can I tell them a little bit about districts? Or do you want to tell that story? Jay Kason had a little adolescent moment, and he was eight pounds over before they were to head out to North Platte for districts, and Coach Ryan picked him up. The rest of the team went on. He says, "Come on, we're gonna work this, get this weight off of you," and they did. You did it in less than 24 hours, got out there, district champion, state champion. So it's amazing what these guys do, as well as their coaches. So I just want to thank all their coaches and those people who supported them to get them to Croatia, and I'll let them speak a little bit about those experiences.
Okay, so Croatia was kind of weird at first. I mean, I just slept a lot, but it was a pretty good experience. I learned that, like, for us, we only train about two, three times a day, try to put in as much extra work as we can, but then over there, they go full all the time. We have three different styles over here. They only like one style. When they grow up, they have to choose between one or the other, so they're going hard all the time. It was a nice experience.
Another good experience that happened in Croatia, just watching them warm up, watching the China girls sit there showing their expressions, yelling on the mat just during the warm-up, going full-fledged. After the wrestling part of it, I got to go watch and see the quarterfinals of, I think it was Russia and Croatia, I believe. They was going into semis, and after they won in the shootout, the whole country and city just went nuts. Like, everyone was in the fountain and just screaming, blocking streets off and whatnot. So it was just pretty fun watching that and seeing something different that you don't usually see out on the street, but yeah.
Thank you.
Before I leave, I want to also recognize MacMillan Middle School. Both these gentlemen attended MacMillan, and I know Dr. Talbot, when James first came to Burke, she gave me a call and she said, "He's a talent, you know, make sure you keep an eye on him." And, I mean, just that communication between buildings to say, "Here's somebody who's got great potential." Not that they don't all have potential, but sometimes people see something really special that if we just give a little, you know, meet them where they are and give them that extra support, it may or may not have made a difference. But I know that MacMillan was part of both of these gentlemen's experience as well.
What weight classes did you guys wrestle in?
I wrestled 160 this year, and he wrestled 113.
Where'd you start off at the beginning of the season?
168.
Oh my goodness.
I went 106 for state, but I started at 125.
Oh, goodness. I used to wrestle back in when I was a lot skinnier than this, and losing weight is a commitment and true dedication, so kudos to both of you and the discipline that's instilled in you in wrestling. Luann.
Well, congratulations to both of you, and I had a few minutes to chat with you ahead of time. Also, I just want to quickly say, what an amazing experience to be able to go to that soccer game. I mean, that's a pretty, that's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, so how very cool. You each wrestle a different style, it looks like. Can you tell us a little bit about what that entails? One of you was freestyle and...
I wrestle Greco, and I'm just not as good in freestyle, I'm just better at Greco. And Greco is a style where you just can't touch the legs, so it's more of a throwing, upper-body type of mixture, and it's a lot easier to score points faster if you know how to throw someone, so. The reason I didn't wrestle Greco at Fargo was because I already had that title, and I wasn't planning on going at first, but I was going into my junior year, and I knew that colleges would be looking there, and they only care about freestyle, really, even though they only wrestle folkstyle. But freestyle is mainly, you could do whatever you want. You could do Greco, you can do folkstyle, but it's just a fast-paced, uptempo thing, so, yeah.
I think Jay Kason is ranked number one in the nation right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, wow. That is, I had a child one year that wrestled, and I applaud you because the losing weight and the not getting pinned, to me, are unbelievable, so congratulations to both of you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
Asking a total loaded question, out of the two of you, which one's better? Me.
That's good.
Well, gentlemen, thank you guys so much. If you don't mind, would you like to come around? We would like to shake all your, both of your hands and then take a photo right here with your mom as well.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Passionate feedback. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening, President Snow, Vice President America, and members of the Board of Education. Last week, we welcomed almost 400 new teachers to Omaha Public Schools at a kickoff at Baxter Arena. These excited new teachers are busily working in their buildings with the Curriculum Department and learning all things OPS. Please join me in welcoming them into the profession that makes all other professions possible. Very excited to have all of them. Pending Board Approval on tonight's Consent Agenda, the awardee for Program Management and Services for Phase Two will commence work on projects slated to be completed, which includes five brand-new schools to relieve overcrowding and provide state-of-the-art facilities for our students and teachers. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the voters of Omaha for their overwhelming support of our students and the future of Omaha. The district team continues to meet weekly to address preparedness for a smooth opening for our 53,000 students and their families. Wilson Focus opened on July 26th. Students were greeted by their principal, Brett Anderson, and the fabulous staff at Wilson Focus. On Wednesday, August 8th, Howard Kennedy will open its doors for the 2018-2019 school year. School bells ring for all of our other schools on Wednesday, August 15th. We look forward to a smooth opening for all, and we'd like to thank the district team yet again, all the folks who work and support to make sure that that happens for our students and their families. Please join us at noon Saturday, August the 11th. That is this Saturday, here at the TAC building, for the back-to-school kickoff. The students from five elementary schools located near TAC will receive free backpacks and many other goodies. We will have bands, school mascots, and lots of entertainment from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM right here at TAC. Thanks to the Division of Family and Community Services, under the direction of leadership of Lisa Utterback, and many partners. There are so many partners that I'm not going to name all of them because for fear I'll leave someone out, who are participating to make sure that all students from all five of those elementary schools will receive free backpacks and other items that they need to start school off on the right foot. This evening at 5:00 PM, I attended the ribbon cutting, which was virtual, for the mobile learning unit, the first of its kind within OPS. It is a former Title I bookmobile that has been transformed into a modern technology education facility on wheels. Thank you, Leo A. Daily Company, for the hard work that they put into the design of the interior of the bus, and to Microsoft for their support in providing technology. Others, other partners are Cox Cable. This mobile unit offers one solution to the challenge, providing, the digital divide challenge, providing access to 15 Microsoft Surface Tablets, virtual reality coding, STEM programming, digital citizenship education, to name some of the things that students will be able to experience. It will move around like a bookmobile. For some of you old timers, such as myself, you may remember the bookmobile coming to your community, but this is the 21st century of that. Cox Business Wi-Fi connectivity will be available at select locations around North Omaha, all free of charge to our families. Special shout-out to Tony Gunter, principal of Howard Kennedy School, students, parents, and his fine staff. Rob Dixon, Executive Director of Information Services, for his vision, and to our fellow Meadows at 75 North for their joint leadership of the project. It was a real celebration. The kiddos were really delightful, and I do have my glow-in-the-dark, whatever this is, I think it fits a little kid, their neck, that was going on this evening. It was really a lovely celebration. Principal Gunter really knows how to bring out his students and his staff, and to have them understand the significance of not just a party, but the significance of the opportunity for the folks in the North Omaha community to have digital connectivity. And so, those in my remarks for this evening, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Board members. Mrs. Gotti.
I want to give a huge shout-out to Burke, and I know Dr. Lanin is still here. So Burke High School's baseball team won the American Legion Tournament this past weekend. It was the first time since 1989, I think, something like that, and I'm not sure that there's been even too many OPS high schools that have been at that level since then. So I just want to give a huge shout-out. I know that it's the American Legion team, but all of those students are pretty much Burke students and they're ours, and so I just want to congratulate them on a huge feat to win 11 to 1, I think it was, right? Big score. So congratulations.
Mrs. Cassidy.
So Dr. Logan mentioned that we have first-day school beginning this, next week, on August 15th, and I just want to, first of all, thank, I don't know if this is on here every year and I just didn't notice it, but I have been logging into OPS's homepage every day, looking at the lovely countdown screen. So just, I don't know who exactly does our website, if it's our Information Technology Department with our Communications Department, but I want to tell you that this is awesome. We have eight days, five hours, 17 minutes, and 53 seconds till school starts. So thank you from one parent that is so excited for school to be back in session. I do also want to mention that I think next week starts all of the safe walks back to school for all of the schools, so just kind of a reminder to check out the OPS website if you have students that are going to be needing to attend a safe walk to school night. I know my kindergartner has an event tomorrow at school to kind of meet her teachers, so just everyone check out OPS's website, and just best of luck to all of the schools across our district for a smooth first day coming up. Thanks.
Mr. Smith.
I wanted to recognize College Possible and Kappa Alpha Psi fraternity Incorporated for awarding scholarships to two young gentlemen this past weekend. They do a really good job of wrapping their arms around those guys. They had them doing community service for a couple of years, and so they have a young group that's called Kappa Leaguers, where they really wrap their, again, wrap their arms around and make sure they're going to be successful. They had a banquet that I was able to attend and speak with some of the advisors. Mr. Curtis Morgan leads that group, and they've done a really good job with those young men.
Thank you. I have a comment. Tomorrow, colleagues on the board, I put this at your table, I didn't have enough to share, but tomorrow marks the 10th anniversary for Collector for Youth. They serve almost 7,500 of our students, and they are very STEM-driven and really care about our kids to the point that they're always encouraging all their providers for professional development to make sure that after-school programming really makes a difference for our students. And they're celebrating their 10th anniversary, and if you look at the front of this, my face is on there, this is when I toured Lothrup Elementary, and I believe it's Civic Nebraska that is the provider at this site, and the students were making forts with marshmallows and sticks there, and I played with them for a little bit, and I believe this is actually their kindergarten class, too. So shout-out to Collector for Youth. And then tomorrow, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the UNO Alumni Center, they will be having an event with First National Bank, collecting book bags and back-to-school supplies, so if you have any extra supplies that you would like to drop off there, you can do that, and it will go directly to the students that they serve and into the community. So quick shout-out to the Board and the entire staff at Collector for Youth. Ms. America.
First off, I wanted to let our Board members know, if you didn't notice in our meeting room, we do have our copies of the 2017-2018 Annual Report from the Council of Great City Schools, which we are a member of since we are one of the, about 75 largest school districts in the country now at this point, after some recent member updates that they made. I do also want to take just a quick point of personal privilege, because I would be very remiss if I didn't mention item I-19, our Consent Agenda, which is a resolution to recognize Be Kind Day in Omaha on August 24th. And I want to be clear that I support this resolution and the idea behind it, which, to quote it, it says, "A stronger, healthier community, free of bullying and harassment, that embraces diversity at all levels, is achievable if we commit to be kind all the time." And I will be voting for it when we get to that, but given recent events in our community and around our country, and I mean specifically in Omaha, we've seen over the last couple of months racist flyers on light poles indoors, neo-Nazi literature being placed in Little Free Library, swastikas being burned into one of our parks and painted in cemeteries in our area, we need to acknowledge we can't just tell our students they have to be kind or be civil, regardless of what is being hurled at them. We need to acknowledge that the hateful rhetoric our students are being exposed to daily impacts and causes trauma, especially to our students of color, our LGBTQ-plus students, and our non-Christian students. We need to be empowering all of our students to stand up, speak out, and fight back when they are faced with hatred, bigotry, and oppression, even if they are not the ones being targeted. We must prepare our students to fight back not just with kindness, but with courage, strength, empathy, and understanding for one another.
Thank you, Vice President America. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, we have seven speakers who have submitted Request to Speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will insist us in looking into those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will assure that each Board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is 6:55, and our first speaker is Susie Anderson.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Logan. I'm here tonight to ask the Board to not sign our contracts. We feel our contracts are not fair and were not negotiated in good faith. We were told what the Board wanted, and that's what we were going to get. Megan wanted all the contracts done by July 1st, so we felt that six to nine meetings of negotiating were not enough, and our requests were never considered. We ask that we can go back in over the next 30 days and renegotiate, or we ask that you freeze our contracts and just change the dates for this year, and we'll negotiate again next year. It is not fair for our people to lose money on these contracts. We want our district to thrive and succeed, but it shouldn't come at the cost of the support staff. We make the least amount of money, and we are the ones that get the most taken away. I hope you will take this in consideration and be fair to our support staff. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Gregory Gruber.
I'm Greg Gruber. I came to work for OPS in 1972, June, Dundee School.
Could you state your...
Address?
Yes, please.
1856 South 133rd Street. I live in the Burke area.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm the head custodian... I'm the Head Custodial Engineer at Norris Middle School. I have 38 years full-time experience, started on Cinco de Mayo, 1980. This fall marks 100 years ago that my grandmother, Rose Dolajal, worked as a teacher in a one-room schoolhouse in Saunders County, Nebraska. My mother taught for a number of years and died one year ago yesterday. On that day, I chose not to be with my family, to spend nine hours at my school. Nine hours so McCarthy could continue to build, so electricians, union electricians, could install material, so we could get our school open on time. I'm a proud graduate, 1973, of Northwest High School. I won first in the nation in a 26,000-entry PTSA Cultural Arts Contest. My poem was hanging in that school for years. I'm a 1991 graduate of the University of Nebraska at Omaha, outstanding undergraduate in sociology, six honor societies, and I got my degree in sociology magna cum laude. And I'm a father. My two kids went to North High School with Coach Gene Haynes, and they got a dang good education. They're both excelling in life. I'm really proud of them. And I'm proud of what I've done in 38 years with Omaha Public Schools. I have been accused of being passionate. I am passionate, and I will fight for what I need from my kids in my school. I've been accused, and it's true. I stand guilty of that. Thanks for what you said about bullying. I see kids bullied. I work with the kids too. I'm not a teacher, but I work with the kids to stand up to that. We were told, "This is our last, best, and final offer." It's not best. Now, in 1986 to 1988, I was Chief Stewart of Local 226, and I went to the George Aminy Institute in Silver Springs, Maryland, and I learned about contract law. I learned about collective bargaining. I'm sorry, but you have not bargained in good faith with Local 226. It's a fact. You've been advised and misguided and misled down a primrose path. This thing will affect families. This thing will affect families in this community. We are a family, the Omaha Public Schools, and we have children that go to these schools. Take bread off the table. Take the money out of my pocket, and it affects my family and my kids. I know we've got some money problems. Believe me. You can ask McCarthy, and you can ask the guys at Jacobs. I fight to make sure we're not spending money we don't need to spend. But families are going to be affected. When you look at your children, you're going to remember my words, because you want what's best for your family too. We all do. I appreciate the opportunity to get up here and speak, and I'm going to continue to be passionate until I retire or they throw me out the door. I don't care which one of it is, as long as I'm doing a good job. I'll get up at 4:05 tomorrow morning, and I'll be at my school at 5:30 to get the construction guys in, and we want to get it done. So Dr. Carr can open that thing. The only other thing I want to add to that is, the miners in Wales went on strike in 1900 against the British government and the corporations. They struck for three years. Three years, and they won that strike. And they told the British government with signs in their windows every day, Donna Imma O'Hid.
30 seconds.
I don't know who these people are that have come in here to try and break my union. We're still here. We're still here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Miller.
I live at 7301 North 107th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. Superintendent Dr. Logan, President Snow, Vice President America, and board members. Good evening. My name is Robert Miller, and I am the President of the Omaha Education Association. I wanted to take this time this evening to personally thank the OPS team. There are many folks to be named, but just specifically Dr. Logan, Mr. Wakefield, and Dr. Christina Warner for allowing the OEA to be a part of the new teacher orientation at the event at Baxter. It was a great day. Having the opportunity to address close to the 400 new teachers to OPS and welcome them to the teaching profession showed just how OPS and OEA can work together for the betterment of the students and staff of the Omaha Public Schools. Another true sign of just how OEA and OPS sees the importance of collaboration in action would be the first-ever Pro Comm Committee meeting taking place just last week. Through the negotiation process of last year, the Professional Committee was formed to consider problems and discuss ways in which improvements can be made. The committee that is made up of 24 individuals met last week, and we were able to come up with options for the elementary and secondary parent-teacher conference schedules. I believe the committee was successful with this first ask, or first task, and look forward to additional successes for the coming year. Again, thank you, Dr. Logan and the school board, for working in collaboration with the OEA to address concerns being faced and ways to improve them. The stage has been set for a successful school year. Let's make it a great one together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Chapman.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Logan. My name is Robert Chapman. I reside at 9773 Ohio Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. I, like Greg, got 37 years in Omaha Public Schools. I've been a building engineer at McMillan, kudos to those students who are here earlier, for about 34 years at that same facility. I've been an engineer at other places, and my loyalty to the system is somewhat questioned today. And the reason why it's questioned is because I'm also a negotiator. Part of the negotiating process is to negotiate. By negotiating, you don't make, you don't allow all changes in a contract without negotiating. That's prohibitive practice, and that's what Greg was alluding to. If you look at case 440 of the Commission of Industrial Relations, you'll find out exactly what transpired last year, which is why the board lost that case, because you did not negotiate. And that was public record, it's out of the state of Nebraska, chapter, excuse me, case 1440. You can read the brief on that. When you negotiate, both parties have to agree to something. But when you make a change in a contract and then say, "That's your best and final offer," that's not negotiating. That's a dictatorship, and that's what negotiation is all about. That's not what we're about either. We're about being fair. These contracts are not fair. I'm telling you right now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Clark.
My name is Tim Clark, 15214 Martin Avenue, and I'm proud to stand before you and to tell you and let you know that I'm a product of OPS, Benson High School, Monroe, Clifton High, and so very proud of that, very proud of that. I wanted to, basically, there's some concerns that I had that I wanted just to bring to the board in reference to the OPS bond project. First of all, I want to congratulate the board on successfully getting the vote of the people, getting that passed. Here's a few of my concerns that I have in reference to more in terms of process. As we look at proceeding with the OPS bond projects, I trust that we will continue to put students first and give strong consideration to community impact. If that's important, I don't understand why we don't find it necessary to give attention to local companies. In terms of just the top three candidates, none of the candidates that advance in terms of the process represent Omaha or from Omaha. I think it's just a chamber thing to do, to look home first. As we desire to maximize in terms of our abilities to be more inclusive and diverse in really minority companies being a part of this process, it really just is mind-boggling that the largest African-American construction company in the United States did not get considered for this opportunity, did not even make the shortlist. I would ask, as we look at proceeding with this process, that we slow down in terms of it's too important, especially as we look at you representing the voters, and we continue to say, you know, the impact of the community, students first, that we make sure we get this right. In that, in the process, a couple other concerns is the RFP that went out was not a weighted process. And what you find traditionally in a lot of these RFPs, that there is, the bidders have some way to gauge and measure or have some notion of how you will judge them and how you will measure them in terms of a weighted process. Reviewing that, the RFP, I did not see that. I did not see a weighted measurable process. The other thing in terms of just that was brought to my attention, that a committee member that was on the selection committee is a staff member of OPS, but also a former staff member of Jacobs. And I'm not casting judgment on anyone, I'm just saying in terms of that needed to be an item of full disclosure, and that people need to know the rules of engagement and all the players, and if players have conflict of interest. And so those were two of my concerns in terms of just not being weighted, the conflict of interest, and how could we miss out on an opportunity at least to visit and interview the top, the largest African-American construction company in the United States, H.J. Russell. And so what I would ask that the board consider is interviewing all of the candidates, all the folks that bid it on this job, go back, have a weighted system, and so the public can know that we have a person that's most definitely the best, that's going to give the impact that we need community-wise, and is going to really take and look at making sure we maximize our efforts in the quality and keeping our students first. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Justin Wayne.
My name is Justin Wayne, J-U-S-T-I-N-W-A-Y-N-E, 8937 North 56th Avenue, Circle 68152. I am here to talk about the process in which we are going to talk about our bond here in the construction management company. Now, I will tell you, I met with Mr. Snow and Dr. Logan, and I promised them as a state senator that I will not only carry but push through OPS's most important legislation this year, and they can verify that I said that if you were to ask them. I'm here not only as a state senator, but as a parent and as a community activist who lives actually east of 72nd Street. And the reason I bring up 72nd Street is because many of you may not know, because the city of Omaha and other public entities, Douglas County, have spent, including OPS, over $1.8 billion in the last six years east of 72nd Street. Sewer separation project, roads by the city of Omaha, and then, yes, the bond that I was a part of, over $421 million roughly, many of those dollars spent east of 72nd. Yet my question to this board is, how has our poverty rates improved in the last six years? So it's not all your responsibility, but we do have a responsibility as a board to make sure that the dollars we spend and the impact we have on the community improves what I call the family tree, the outcome of the family tree. We all see ancestral trees, and we want to prove what goes on in our future. So my question to you really is, what SEB program or SBE program will Jacobs or anybody who institutes really do to change the outcome of the students we serve? And the reason I started with Omaha Public Schools, and I'm going to the city council and everybody else, because you of all boards or government entities know the impact of poverty. How do I know? Because every day in the legislature, I hear OPS, what's different about OPS is the poverty rates and the issues that we deal with when it comes to poverty. Yet we are going to make a suggestion, and I had this fight four years ago with some of the board members on here, and I will say that some of us didn't win, some of us did win. But regardless, four years later, after $421 million, has our neighborhoods' income changed? But yet, we argue about poverty and the impact. So I say that you have a duty to make sure the SBA program and the schools that we serve and the schools that we build change the family tree for the students we serve. Poverty rates continue to stay steady or increase in our schools. And I can't help but mention the Omaha Chamber survey when it comes to young professionals who look like me and some board members up here. They clearly said five out of six times more likely not to recommend Omaha if you are a black and young professional. I didn't put that out, the Chamber put that out. Yet when the largest African-American-owned construction firm applies here, I can't point to an objective reason why they didn't even get an interview. There is no standard in the RFP. And why is this important? Because the statute reads on bids, RSQ, RFPs, however you want to call it, and by the way, this was a mixture, wasn't very clear, it's the most responsible bidder, most responsible lowest bidder. There is the word of responsibility, because the legislature has said it's not just about the lowest bidder, but the responsible bidder. And my question to you is, what is the responsible bidder in this situation going to make sure that the lives that we serve every day, and I represent east Omaha, have the opportunities and the chances
One minute.
...to change their family tree? Again, 1.8 billion, 1.1 in sewer separation, 400 million by OPS, 200 million a year at the city of Omaha on streets, but yet our poverty rate either is going up or staying the same. You have a chance now to do something different. You have a chance to pull this off of consent, reset a board agenda, which our interviews, interview, or people who apply, I guess is the way to say it.
30 seconds.
Come in and do an interview and specifically tackle that issue. We spent two meetings four years ago on this exact issue, which Mark Snow led, President Snow. To not have a conversation and deal specifically with that today when we have seen no change in poverty does a disservice to the communities we represent. And I know many of you personally, and I hope when I go back to my office and watch this on web, we have an interview and we see specifically what they're going to do to change the family trees for all the kids we represent. Thank you.
Our next speaker is William King.
My name is William King, 1416 North 38th Street. I'm the owner of 95.7, the boss radio station. I first learned how to read at King Science Center. My mama couldn't read because she picked cotton, so she expected me to read. Our schools are called Omaha First, and so I'm really kind of disappointed in what I heard, that we're not really looking at Omaha, our neighbors first in regards to contracts, and especially labor. I'm here because of my dad, we Air Force, and so, again, we have that, those local roots. And so I want to encourage you, as a senator, to say, how can we put some money in the community just around us? As a radio station, no one has came to us and advertised Omaha Star. These are Omaha, these are your neighbors, and no one's advocated for vendors, looking at vendors, your neighbors, they're for Omaha. And so if we look at individuals that get contracts and take money And so, if we look at individuals that get contracts and take money somewhere else, how can we change our environment? We're always looking for monies, the best way to get monies is to put money right next door, and the money will come back. And so, as a radio station, we have a responsibility, and we're called The Boss for a reason, because we expect excellence, and that's what my mom expected out of me, who I still read for, who was 87. And so, we just want the same, just love your neighbor, look at individuals in Omaha first before you look outside, like we don't have any intelligence. That's what it feel like to me, we don't have any intelligence to, to lead a bond or, or to lead whatever. We have greatness coming from, from these schools. Maybe you guys not old enough, I don't know, maybe you guys not from here, I don't know. I'm 53, I know I look young, but heck yeah, no, I'm looking good, heck yeah, I'm in shape, I've been working out, but I'm a product of Long School. I don't know if you guys remember Long School? Probably don't. So, I've been doing this for a long time. And so, we expect excellence out of you guys, I mean, you guys are our leaders, and if we can't get love from our neighbors, I'm pretty sure y'all, all y'all go to church every Sunday, but, but on Monday, you forget about your neighbor? And so, I'm from the community, I grew up in Hilltop Projects. Period. No one expected me to get a radio station. Period. And so, that's why I'm up here, because for those that you guys forget, or others forget, those that slip through the cracks, those neighbors that you forget about. But when I grew up in the projects, oh yeah, Miss Turnstile, when we was hungry, we can go and get something to eat. If we need to borrow some sugar, we kept our word and we returned the sugar from our neighbor. We actually practiced that, I don't, maybe you guys didn't grow up in that era, but we actually did that, we actually ate, we actually love our neighbor, period. And so, if
One minute.
... you forget about labor, who builds our community? That's the foundation of our community. If you forget the vendors, that's, that's providing service from IT to, to marketing, if you're not doing outreach in the, in the community to look at us first, then, I don't know. So, I encourage you to
Thirty seconds.
... love thy neighbor, look at your neighbor first, because greatness come from Omaha Public Schools, I'm a product of Brian Hyde, and so I know I'm great without a doubt. Without a doubt. Appreciate you.
That ends our public comment section. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Over the motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Mrs. Godding, second by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions? Hearing non-roll call, please. Pullman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Motion carries. There are no action items on the agenda. We have one item for information, and it is the PowerPoint for the budget workshop. So, we'll give Connie Kanoki, Mr. Ray, a minute to get set up.
It's meant to be a microphone. Do you just use these?
President Snow, Vice President America, board members, Superintendent Logan, I would like to present for you information about our operating budget for the 2018-19 school year. Before I do that, I would like to remind you that the reason we're all here and what we do is to support the 53,000 students that we represent. Everything we do in the budget development, everything, every, every department, division does is to help support the students, to make sure they get the best education. We have a, a budget development timeline, we have our budget workshop this evening, we'll be getting our assessed valuations, that's when we know what our property taxes are going to be, that'll be on August 20th. And then, our, we're going to have our budget, or publish our budget hearing on the 27th, and our school fiscal year end actually ends August 31st. We will have our budget hearing on September 5th, and then we have to file our budget for the 18-19 school year by September 20th. So, when we begin the budget development, what I want you to, to come away with from today is three things. It's the, what we estimate our revenues to be for operating the budget, what we estimate our expenditures to be, and then what our fund balance is, and that's really the, the main parts of what we do. So, for our revenues to support the general fund operations, if you look on the PowerPoint, we, we get revenue from three sources. We get it from property taxes, we get it from the state revenues, and then from federal sources. And really, the, the revenues are what drive our budget. We can't spend more than what our revenues are, so we watch this really closely, we monitor it, we're always checking what our revenues are, and coming to the end of August, we'll have a, we'll know exactly what we had collected for the 17-18 year, which will propel us forward. But what we've estimated our, our receipts to be for 18-19 are $594 million, and that's a slight decrease from what it was the previous year. If you look at what our property taxes did, there was a 5% increase in property tax revenue and then a 4% decrease in state aid, so they kind of went hand in hand, but we need all the revenue we can get because those are our three sources, and if any one of those goes down, then we have to come up with additional ways to make the budget balance. So, our estimated expenditures for the next year are $613 million. And I want to refer you back to January of this year when we created the Budget Advisory Committee, and we had several meetings with this committee, I believe it was six meetings that we had with the committee, and we came up with budget reduction strategies, because what we had forecasted for the coming year was a shortfall of about $52 million going into the next year. And what that did is we looked at what we spent the year before, and then all of the things that we knew that we had to do for the following year, such as textbook adoption, we have the additional retirement contribution, that was $21.3 million, and then we had a negotiated agreement with our teachers for a 1.6% increase in salaries, which we equated to $5 million that we knew we had to come up with. So, those were some challenges that we had. And then, so we went through the Budget Advisory Committee, they made recommendations for what the reduction should be, and then at the May 31st workshop with the board, you gave us direction on how we should develop the 18-19 budget. So, when we did that, there were district recommended reductions and then also what the Budget Advisory Committee suggested as well. So, a combination of that ended up being about $29 million in reductions. So, we had a shortfall of $52 million, then we came up with $29 million in reductions, and then the balance was used with our fund balance, our cash balance was going to use to balance the 18-19 budget. So, the recommended cuts, just to refresh your memory, was, there was a, we decided not to do the textbook adoption, postponed that for a year. We recommended a $12.6 million reduction at central office, and that actually ended up being $13.4 million reduction that we came up with. We eliminated, we reduced the, the travel budgets, cell phone stipends, we froze pay for staff besides the teachers because their contract was already negotiated. We reduced supply and material budgets, we had a reduction in our summer school, we eliminated some elementary magic allocations, and then eliminated a couple of assistant principal positions. So, all of those things were parameters that you gave us when we were developing the budget. And so, when we developed the budget, we came up with the $613 million that we're proposing today. Now, overall, the elementary schools saw a two-point, or all of the buildings, the elementary, middle, high school, alternative programs, all had an increase in expenditures. We were moving some teachers that were previously paid for with Title II money back into the general fund, so that equated to some of the increase. There was also the package increase for the, the teachers, plus there were some additional staff hired at different levels. So, overall, their FTE at all the buildings was a 2.88 FTE increase. Now, this is still going to be changing because we just got a request today to add a couple more teachers at one of the buildings that was overcrowded. So, all of this will change up until the time we do our actual budget adoption. But at this point in time, the FTEs are about a three, three FTE increase in all of the We had reductions in district operations of $6.3 million, curriculum and instruction, $6.4, our contingency we reduced, and we also accounted for that $21.3 million additional retirement contribution that we're going to have to make this August, next August when we finish the year. So, total positions that were eliminated at central office was 60 positions that we eliminated, and then the total reduction at central office was 13.4. So, there was a recommendation of 12.6, but we actually reduced more than that at central office. So, you know, the revenues are limited, and we only have so much to, to spend. We have this retirement contribution that is a continuing obligation of the district. In the years to come, it, it keeps increasing from one year to the next, so we know for 18-19, it's going to be 21.3, then it goes up to 23.5, and then each year it keeps going up. So, it's something that we have to address, something we have to deal with. So, so that's our revenue picture and then our expenditure picture, and then I wanted to bring your attention to our fund balance, our unrestricted fund balance. The board has a policy that we have to maintain a fund balance between 10 and 20% of what our estimated expenditures are. So, over the years, our fund balance has fluctuated, but we've built it up, up until And when we're finishing out the year, we have one more month left, the end of August is the end of our fiscal year. The last financials I have are as of June 30th. We closed the books for July on Wednesday, but we still don't have that information to give you what's happening. But I'm showing you what's on Slide 5, just to explain to you that we had planned last year to draw down our fund balance by $9.4 million. And our income and loss, when we look at the revenues and expenditures, and then with our planned drawdown, our projected gain or loss is about $900,000. We're not going to draw down more from fund balance than what we need to, but that's just a projection of what it is. And to put this all in perspective, you know, our finance department is continually monitoring our revenues, our expenditures, seeing where we're at compared to budget, and we're less than 1% off on any of those projections. So, they do an amazing job with that. For the budgeting, Chrissy and her staff do a great job projecting what our expenses are going to be. We never budget for anything that doesn't really happen, you know, we have a good relationship with all of the departments, we know what departments are doing, we know what the buildings need, so we've got a really good system in place, and to be this close to the budget is truly amazing if you're looking at a $600 million budget. So, they're doing a, a great job and just wanted to show you what's happening with that. Our fund balance, our unrestricted fund balance on, at 2017 was $103 million, and our planned drawdown, like we talked about earlier, was $9.4 million. We needed additional funds to pay for the ARC this year, which was $18.9 million. And then, cash needed to balance the budget after we look at our revenues and expenditures leaves us with $60 million, which is 10% of the budget of expenditures. So, what we need to do going forward is we need to look at additional reductions as we go into next year. This year, we have the, the budget balanced with what we have and, and all of the hard work that everyone's done to try to get this put together. The expenditures that I'm showing here still does not show what happened with the paraprofessionals. There were 130 positions that have been eliminated, but the paperwork hasn't run through, so the budget office has not reflected that in our, our budget projections, because we only budget for what we have for open positions. We don't do it based on, you know, an estimate of it, but all of the people have been notified, everything's been done, it just hasn't run through our paperwork yet. So, we're waiting for that to happen. Fund balances, you'll have a better idea when we come back in September for our budget hearing to give you what's actually happened with the district, but, yes.
And just for the community that is here, those are unfilled parapositions, not, you said eliminated, but just for those that might think that we got rid of 100 paras, those were unfilled positions. So, they weren't going to be filled by the
Yeah, they, they were moving staff around between different funding levels, but yeah, that was 130 positions, yes.
Thank you.
So, that's what I have for the budget workshop. I talked about our revenues, what we have for the revenues, that really doesn't change, that's just what it is. And then, talking about our expenditures, what we've done to try to come to our budget that we have right now, and then our fund balance that we have to be mindful of as we go forward into the next year, because we don't want to have that dip below 10%.
Fair. Just real quick for members of the board, you have the packet as well in the community. We have the workshop today, and we will have publication of the budget hearing forms on the 27th that will go out, and then on September 5th, we'll have the budget hearing and adoption, and then the filing deadline with the county and the state department on the 20th of September. So, that is the timeline. If you review your packet, Dr. Logan?
Just a point of clarification in that, in terms of the cut, potential cuts for next year, I just want to make sure that I alleviate concerns of the workforce by hearing that statement, in that we are looking at many other kinds of remedies that we can perhaps look at moving forward, so that we do not have to experience the same impact of cuts that were experienced during the 2017-2018 cycle. So, I just want to make sure that the community is aware, and especially the workforce, because they hear that, and it immediately puts people on edge, and I want them to know that And I want them to know that, um, uh, the team is working on, um, solutions, uh, the entire board team, um, along with the admin team, uh, so that we are not experiencing cuts at that level, um, in the next cycle. Just want to make sure that's a, uh, point is very clear to everyone.
And another thing that was asked, um, when we did the budget 101 sessions with board members is what we were doing to prepare for the future on additional reductions. And, and as Dr. Logan had mentioned, we're going to be meeting as a staff to figure out where to go. And then I also included in the packet that you have areas for future study that was recommended by the Budget Advisory Committee as a, a starting point for when we go forward.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, the handout that the board members have, this is also, uh, on the agenda for those that would like to download it at home. Um, any questions for members of the board? Mr. Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Um, if we could go back to page, well, it's like we're already there. Nope, no, we're not there. Page six.
Page six.
So this is, what we're looking at is for 2017-2018.
Well, what we know, what our unrestricted fund balance was from the audit report for 2017 was $103 million when we started out. And then, uh, we had to subtract from that what we needed to make the additional retirement contribution, plus what we used to balance for 17-18's budget. We had planned, we knew our revenues weren't going to be as high as our expenses, so we knew we had to draw down some of that fund balance, and we had planned to use $9.4 million.
Right. But my question is about the next line there, the cash needed to make ARC payment, ARC payment. Because if I heard you right, you said it was 18.9 million?
Yeah, we had budgeted for some of it in our benefits, and then we also had to come up with additional cash to pay for that. And that's what we paid in August.
Well, this says 11.9 million.
Yes, because part of it was all built into our budget.
Okay, all right.
7.5 or something was built into our benefits that we had budgeted for last year.
Okay.
Because we knew we had to make something, but then that number kept changing, which is another thing about the additional retirement thing is, we don't know from one year to the next what it's going to be, and it, it's a little bit difficult to try to come up with that in, in a month or two, so.
Okay, I appreciate that, thanks.
Mrs. Godding.
So I think maybe, and I'm just thinking about Mr. Pearlman's question, really, we're at 81-800 starting the year.
Yes.
And then at the end, and then during the year, we anticipate potential of 21-6 drawdown, which gets us to the 60.
Yes.
Million. So.
And that number could change, you know.
Exactly.
If revenues came in better, or if we didn't spend as much, something like that, we wouldn't have to draw down as much from our fund balance, but.
Right, if we figure out ways for savings. So I have a couple of questions. Are we, originally, we were anticipating a property tax increase of roughly 3%. Is it 5% now? Is that what you're looking at?
I'm still looking at the 3% increase.
Oh, still looking at the 3%.
Yeah, but we will know on the 20th what that is.
So how do we go on a, I'm just looking back at slide two where it's 5.43% increase in the property tax piece?
There was a revaluation that happened in Douglas County that affected a lot of the property that we have in our district. Um, we got some preliminary numbers, but I checked with all of the schools in the surrounding metro area, and everybody brings their projections down a little bit, just to, you know, we have delinquent taxes, we have.
Right.
People that don't pay their taxes, so there's, you know, you have to be a little bit careful with being too optimistic with revenues.
Okay. What kind of impact does not filling the 100-plus paras have on this budget? You, because you said they haven't, it hasn't been put in yet? How does?
It's, my understanding is about $2 million.
Okay.
So that would reduce the 613 down to 611, which when you compare that to the 594 million in, in revenues, there's still a gap that would have to be filled.
Yes. Okay.
So that would mean that we wouldn't draw down as much in fund balance, if that were the case.
Right.
So if revenues came in higher and that expenses were reduced, then we wouldn't have to draw so much from fund balance. So that would be good for us.
Is the curriculum, which we didn't purchase this year, in this budget?
No, it is not. Well, we, we're budgeting, uh, we're setting aside because we know, like on large purchases, you can't spend, you know, $7 million all at once if you're not planning for how to account for it. So we have that built into our plan is to try to accumulate enough money to make the, the textbook adoption purchase next year.
So it's in here?
Not the whole thing, but we've got some set aside, yeah.
Okay. And then on slide five, I, it's probably just maybe semantics, but, um, I think where it shows revenue expenditures, and we have a loss of 8.4, we have a planned drawdown. In my mind, that next line isn't necessarily total projected gain-loss, it's.
Balance.
It's an over, um, overdraw or, um, excess of drawdown, because it's not, we don't have a gain or loss.
No, that's true.
And we have, it's just an excess drawdown.
Right.
Or reflected as of today, when we don't know what that number's going to be.
True, yes.
So I just want to make sure the public doesn't think, we're talking about all this stuff when we have gains.
That we have a gains, but yeah, we don't.
Because we don't.
We may by the end, when I get the financials for July, I'll be sure to let the Budget Committee know. And then when we get to August, or September 5th, when we do the budget hearing, we will know what the revenues and expenditures are, so.
And hopefully it'll be much better than.
Yeah.
What we have today. All right, very good, thank you.
Any other members of the board? Mr. Scanlon.
Having been on the Budget Committee and, and just kind of hearing a little bit more of the details, um, I think the ARC payment is obviously a very significant, um, dollar amount moving forward. Uh, I guess if Superintendent Logan can, uh, talk to the board and, and the public of, of kind of what our game plan is for addressing that as we move forward, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. We've actually already started, um, with having, um, discussions with, I've been in Lincoln quite a bit, to start having discussions about some potential remedies. Um, we are having a strategy session, I believe it's next Friday, that we have that strategy session with, um, a legislative strategy, strategy session, um, but also have also begun, um, bringing the different, uh, groups together, um, OSAA, um, OEA, um, et cetera, to start talking about, uh, having a united front as we problem solve, uh, together, so that, um, you know, we can, uh, provide our retirees, our people near retirees, we want to make sure that they are confident, that, uh, that their pensions will be available, um, to them. But that's, that's where we are. Uh, we started, um, as soon as I came on board with having discussions at every discussion I have with, uh, senators. Um, I usually try to bring it up, but sometimes they beat me to the punch because they are concerned about it as well. And, um, that's, that's where we are. I will, um, probably likely next, uh, probably the first meeting in September, be prepared to give a more detailed report, uh, because I will have had that legislative session and then some other meetings with, um, so many of the, uh, stakeholder groups that need to weigh in, um, and also, uh, need to have, um, some, um, truth, some talks about where we really are and how we're going to move forward together as a collaborative, we can't, it's not going to be individual interests, but a collective interest on behalf of our employees and our retirees.
Okay, thank you. I think that's very important that we, um, just, uh, show the public that we are being proactive about this. We understand, uh, where the shortfall is, and, and I think that's something that we have to be very transparent about, um, in order to, um, gain the public's trust, that we, we do have a shortfall that we have to come up with a, a solution for, and we're working in that direction.
Now, we've contributed 30 million so far to the additional retirement contribution, and it, you know, there's just limited funds to do all the things we need to do to, to run a school district, so those are things we need to think about.
Well, I think it's very important because we don't want to, um, take away from our students', um, opportunities, uh, because of, of ARC payments. We want to make sure that we're very, um, focused on, on keeping the same level of education that we're able to provide to our students, uh, while, uh, catching up with whatever, uh, retirement contributions are, are needed.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Scanlon for saying that, um, because that is the goal, is to keep the level of service. We have excellent service for our students, academic programs, arts programs, and all, students are benefiting from those. And so a part of the, uh, the discussions do not include talking, we're not talking about looking at cutting more, but rather how can we remedy, um, the, this issue?
Any other comments, suggestions, or questions? Do remember, members of the board, if you have anything else, please don't hesitate to email, uh, Connie, call Dr. Logan, Mr. Ray, um, and they will try to meet your needs as soon as possible. Um, there's no receipt of reports. Vice President America?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Mark Warnicki, Dr. Turnquist, Melissa Comine, and Kara Saldierra, Real Estate.
There's a motion by Vice President America to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. I think she beat Mr. Smith to the punch. Do you? Sorry. Roll call.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Naina.
Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of, to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Legal Counsel, Mark Warnicki, Dr. Turnquist, Melissa Comine, and Kara Sal- Saldierra. Um, I'm sorry. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:50. I will fix that when I come back out. Thank you.